Okay, alright. Good evening. The meeting of the Borough, the Board of Adjustment for the Borough of Somerville for August twenty first will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been that on January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four, a copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was posted on the bowling board outside of Borough Hall, given to the clerk administrator, mailed faxed or emailed to the Courier News, and posted on the Borough website. If anybody believes that this meeting is being held in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, please state your views at this time. Hearing none? Next item, roll call.
Chairman Adair?
Here.
Mr. Allitt?
Here.
Ms. Carpenets? Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Videmsky? Mr. Flores?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez? Mr. Daniels?
Would some put one, yeah, would someone please make a motion to excuse the absences of Eric, Stu, and Brian?
Second.
Move the second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item? Pledge of the word to the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Okay. I guess that's all we can do right now.
Good.
Because everything else requires a voice vote. Let's, uh, take, take, take five, six minutes. Unless you have anything? I had a couple things, but Brian and Stuart are not here. The other, no, they're not coming. Brian, Stuart, um, Eric aren't coming. I want to talk about something real estate that's in the zoning ordinance, that's in our ordinance, that I'd like us to take a look at and the mayor and council and the planning board. We allow farm animals. I have chickens running around my neighborhood. One of my, one of the gentlemen on the planning board, his neighbor has a pig. And somebody else has ducks and geese. I'd like to take a look at that and kind of ban them.
I think you gotta be careful.
I know. I know, that's, that's just the thing.
We've had a lot of four inch cases in this town with that. And we had these and stuff like that.
Good point. My wife was cooking on the grill and she looked down and there was a chicken looking at her. She said, got next. That was what was gonna happen. That was just one of the things. D.J. Rosensky has resigned from the planning board after many years. She's moving out of town.
She's moving out of the country.
Yeah. And just like to thank her for her many years of service. She was one of those that she sat on the planning board and her husband was on, on this board years ago. And, um...
She was also helpful when we moved into the fire museum after the restoration. All the pictures hanging up exactly at the lake.
Yeah.
She and her mother did that. My son and I hung them all up with it, you know, with the level at right angle. Everything was perfect. I said, come down, take a look. She goes, no, take them all down, hang them back up. They look better.
Tunnel too. She was involved in her role on the tunnel. Train tracks and Jersey Transit.
Right.
I think she headed out.
She did, with the DSA.
Inside that tunnel with Jersey Transit, I think sponsored.
Yeah, she's a, she's a big proponent of little houses. And I'm just hope, just hoping somebody from the planning board picks up on that. She's gonna be missed. Monday, the Borough Council introduced the ordinance, basically memorializing what we did on the property on Six West Cliff Street, the house on the hill, where they're gonna move the, the driveway. It's gonna cause us to lose two parking spaces there, but they're going to introduce the ordinance at the next council meeting, so...
It was the first reading, right?
It was the first, no.
I think so.
Was it the first reading or was, that they were talking about introducing it?
You could be right. I don't know. I thought it was the first reading, but I could be wrong.
And the planning board is meeting next week. They, they had put out requests for proposals for planning and services for general planning for the affordable how, or the affordable housing element and the historic, no, master plan, master plan. So they'll be meeting on that next week, baby. That's just update.
Have we talked to anybody else?
From, from, a board member?
Yes.
No. We only have six and we do have a devariance. So the applicant's gonna have to take that into consideration.
I don't think we have, we have a special. We have the as-built on the...
On Mercer's street, yeah.
Yeah.
Put it back.
Chairman's call. Sixty Mercer's here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Going for it. Yeah, we should, well, well, we have a transcript, so if anything, if anybody needs it.
Mike's good. He's a good egg. I can understand.
Okay, next item on the agenda, resolutions? I'm sorry, minutes for last month's meeting? So we'd like to move?
I'll move.
Move? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenets?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil? Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Okay, next item, resolutions. Someone like to move a resolution? Move? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenets?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm having a really bad time. Would you take over?
What are we doing, the miscellaneous one?
Want to do that first or, or last? I mean, you want to do it now or last?
I recommend that it says to be sixty Mercer's, so the homeowners can enjoy the rest of the evening.
Alright, next on the agenda, on the miscellaneous, sixty Mercer's Street. It's twenty twenty-two dash zero one eight Z.
I have a conflict.
Don't go anywhere.
Yeah, don't go. If I could fill the board in and the applicant can chime in if I don't get all the stories straight. But what happened is the team here, this is the, the brand new house that was next to the explosion. The board approved it for the variances in the side yard setback. The house looks beautiful. It's almost as built. We got a foundation survey. It matched what the board saw in terms of the side yard setbacks. On the as-built survey, the foundation is shown to be approximately five inches closer to the side yard setback on the, it would be the southern side and three inches on the northern side, and the porch is one point two feet closer to the road. So the relief granted to the board, this exacerbates it by one point two feet for the porch and like five, six inches on one side and two, three inches on the other side. And the applicant also, so the board knows, is not building a wall, retaining a wall at this time. So they're asking for the board to grant the differences, the exas- exacerbation from what the board saw originally for those setbacks.
So we need to make a motion to amend the original resolution?
To amend the original or to approve the as-built survey as is, so that that would document that the board's approving what was built for the side yard setback.
That's correct.
Right?
Yeah.
So I don't know if the applicants or the property is wanting to...
The as-built will control.
It's basically, they're ready for move-in, finish the project, so this is one of the final steps. So I'm sure they're anxious to get through this process. So that's, that's the nutshell.
The survey will be filed...
Did I miss anything?
Just that it's almost been three years since, since the explosion.
Right, you're, you're anxious to get moving on. Yeah.
We've saved our lives where we happily live in twenty years.
They put the utilities in, they've, they've done the sanitary sewer vidro, videotaping it, they've done all the conditions of the approval. And it's just the, the foundation survey doesn't reflect the as-built. That's no, nothing near the, the property when we did.
So how does our motion have to read or sound?
I didn't hear you.
What, what kind of motion do we need to make? Is it to accept the...
We, I would make a motion to accept the as-built as depicting the actual conditions on the property and essentially amending the, essentially amending the existing resolution. I don't have that in front of me, but, that resolution in front of me, but that's, that's how it would be done. No, because the as-built will control anyway. We record, we have the, we, we hold an as-built in our records, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's a chit-bite, but I just wanna make sure. That should be sufficient. There's no reason to go through a new hearing and a new resolution and everything.
Just the board.
They've been through enough. It's a minuteous issue.
Okay, so I'll make that resolution, make that motion.
I'll second that. What Cliff said.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenets? Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil? Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Okay.
You all set?
You're all set. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the dismissal of twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero Z. Give us the background on that, Mike.
Sure. The application was deemed complete last November and it's been continued on this board's agenda at least three times over the last six months. And they did not provide the notice to Jenna for this hearing. And then the attorney came in for the applicant at the same time that Cliff was mulling over dismissing, recommendation to dismiss, and the applicant actually wants it dismissed. He doesn't want to pursue that. Is that correct, Jenna? So we have the applicant's attorney recommending that the board dismiss this.
And the board, and the board's attorney.
And the board attorney.
Dismiss without prejudice. In other words, if they wanna bring it, let me finish. If, if they wanna bring it again some other day, they can do it. This doesn't close the door on them, but essentially it's dismissed. They may never come back. They may come back, but they're not foreclosed from coming back, which is legally how it should be handled. So one wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to dismiss without prejudice for failure to proceed.
Move the second and any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenets? Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, the hearing, twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine Z, twenty-five West High Street. Alright, ask him to move that to the end.
Yeah. Good evening, councilor. Could you enter your appearance, please?
Yes, good evening, Michael Salvaggi from Laborry Salvaggi Abermeyer and Cohen, on behalf of the applicant, twenty-five West High Somerville LLC. This is for the property, no surprise, twenty-five West High. It's Block one thirteen, Lot one. For those who are familiar with the property, it's an existing building there. It's been used for a commercial enterprise for a number of years. Twenty-five West High is a associated company of, if you recall, eighty-seven West High, that was before you, about eighteen months ago. It's an organization that provides housing for those with developmentally, with developmental disabilities. Unlike the prior application, which sought to take that existing building and make it into two families, this is going to be a single-family dwelling with no more than five occupants. It's permitted under your zone, which is the PO-dash-R zone. It's also a recognized permitted use under Section sixty-six point one of the Municipal Land Use Law. We're here in front of you because the application and the conversion of the building does trigger a D-four FAR variance. We're not proposing to do any changes to the building. We're not enlarging it or expanding it in any way. However, it's just merely a function of the space that's there when this was built in relation to the property itself. So we will need that variance. There's also some additional bulk variances. Again, we're not doing anything to, to trigger that. It's just because of the way the property has been laid out. In fact, one of the variances we need, which is for impervious coverage, we've actually substantially reduced it from over seventy percent down to like sixty-three percent. However, that still exceeds what's allowed in this zone. So this evening, we'll have the applicant, a representative for the applicant, address, you know, the operations. We will then have our engineer go through the engineering aspects, address Mr. Cole's report. Mr. Cole had issued a report on August thirteen. Our architect will testify, and then we'll conclude with our professional planner, who will address both the FAR as well as the bulk variances. So without further ado, I'd like to call our first witness. Again, for those who are here, Wendy was before you eighteen months ago for that prior application. Wendy, just stand.
Good evening, ma'am. Welcome back. Would you please raise your right hand? You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so help be God. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Wendy Mandelbaum, first name, just last name. You want me to spell? Sorry.
Oh, no, just please spell your last name.
M-A-N-D-E-L-B-A-U-M.
Alright, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy, we'll get right into it. What's your position with twenty-five West High Somerville LLC?
So I'm the executive, executive director for Hudson Hill, which we do...
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry. This is so different from the other place, so it's a little nerve-wracking. So I'm the executive director for Hudson Hill, and we provide services at eighty-seven West End Avenue. We, I don't know what else.
Well, what, what are the types of services? What's the population that you serve?
So we provide supports for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We are twenty-four, seven, you know, we're there twenty-four, seven. We are, let's see, I don't know how, I'm nervous, I'm sorry. What else?
Well, I mean, what's your experience with providing these types of services?
Right, so I used to run group homes in Maplewood, New Jersey, and so now we're in Somerville. And we have, we're a licensed group home, so we're licensed through DDD.
And what, just for the record, what's DDD?
Department of Developmental Disabilities.
Okay, and that's a state agency?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So we have very stringent guidelines that we have to follow, lots of policy and procedures. In our group homes, we are only allowed to have a maximum of, for all intents purposes, unless there's an exception, but we have to go in front of a board, four people per house. And we also are required to have two staff members at all times when any resident is home, when, when the residents are home. And that's awake staff, so it's twenty-four, seven. So at night, our staff has to be awake and to ensure the safety of our, the people that we supply services to.
Okay, and what, when we talk about developmental disabilities, what types of population would you see here? I mean, what type of services would you provide? And how do they integrate themselves into this proposed group home?
So a big thing with DDD is that they, they like for the demographic to be, you know, immersed into the community. So a lot of the guys we serve are, I would say it's a multi, some are autistic, some are Down Syndrome. Like it's a multi, there's not one, it's not one size fits all kind of thing. And a lot of things that we do is work on their living skills and, right? Because the, the, the whole process is about helping to, you know, make them more independent, help them with their life skills, help them with laundry, help them, you know, be in the community.
And how are these residents brought to your attention? I mean, what's the vetting process, if you will, before they're accepted into your program?
So they have to be on the community care waiver, which is through DDD. So it's a pretty extensive waiting list that, that they have to go through. They have to have a, a support coordinator that works with our, you know, the agency, like our agency. And we just make sure that the people that we choose are cohesive together, and it's a pretty intensive vetting out process. They come out, the parents come out, the support coordinator comes out. You know, we meet and they meet, it's in piecemeal. You have one resident, then you have another resident. Then you make sure that the third resident would be okay with the other two residents, so it's a pretty long process.
And what is, what, what's the expectations imposed upon these residents? I mean, what, how much can you tolerate before they may lose the privilege of staying with your, in your home? I mean, do you dismiss anybody or once they're in, they're in?
Um, it depends, right? Everybody is different. It depends on what their needs are. But for the most part, I mean, we vet people out and make sure that they would be a good fit for our home. We're not a behavioral home. We're not a medical home. So that's, that's...
And, and when we talk about a medical home, that would be, well, what is, what's a medical type home?
A medical home is completely different. You know, it has to be outfitted for a hoyer lift or, you know, it could be a trach tube or anything like that, anything that would require a nursing need. Not, not, that's not true either, because we have to have a nurse also, so an extensive medical need.
Okay.
That would require medical attention day to day, or not that.
And, and on a behavioral, you don't take residents with behavioral issues?
So, I mean, some of our residents could have a behavioral issue, but we, we're not a behavioral house.
And what would that be?
A behavioral house is a behavioral house. Like it's pretty, it's, we're not that. I, I don't know how to explain it.
So the expectation is the residents who are gonna be here are not going to be problematic for the other residents and the community at large, correct?
Correct.
Alright.
Correct.
And once accepted into this program or into this home, what would be kind of a typical day for these residents?
So most of our residents go to day program from nine to three. They go to, you know, different, different day programs in the area. And they usually get home around three o'clock. Some, some people have activities outside. They go to a music class or something like that. And then dinner, and then go for a walk and, and go to bed and start all over the next day.
Alright, and do any of these residents drive?
No.
So how do they get from, or how would they get from this home to their day program or job that they may be working?
Right, so we're, we are required for every four people to have a vehicle. So licensing is, that's a requirement for licensing.
And that vehicle will be operated by one of the two staff that are on site?
Yes.
Alright. Now, are these residents allowed to have visitors come to the home?
Yes.
And typically, how often does that happen?
Um, it depends on their parents. If their parents wanna come, you know, we have parents that come once a week. Every Saturday they come and hang out or take, you know, the resident out for lunch or whatever. And we have some parents that don't really come at all, so it varies.
And the idea behind this is that this group of unrelated individuals kind of function as a family unit, correct?
Correct.
Alright.
Correct. We have family dinners. We have different projects that, you know, we get involved in. But that's our job, is to, to make everybody feel like they're at home.
And, and with that though comes certain familial obligations they may have, correct? I mean, cleaning the table, some of that stuff.
That's part of our skills building, you know, that, that's part of what our job is also, is to, to help, you know, ensure that they have an opportunity to become independent, and that, that's what our goal is.
Alright. Now, within this home, is there, you have four bedrooms?
Four bedrooms.
Alright. Is there, and obviously a kitchen and a dining room, is there space allocated in the building for activities, you know, group activities that the residents would participate in?
Yeah.
And where would that be?
Where would that be? That would be in the, the front of the house. There's so much space in that house that it's, it's great. There's a, a living room and a den and, which is great, because if we have two residents and, you know, two, they like to play Xbox or whatever, we can have that designated area. And then if they wanna build Legos or something like that, they could do that in the other room. So it's, it's adequate space for everybody.
Alright, well, specific, I'm gonna ask you, what, Mr. Cole's report raised an issue about the attic. And the attic right now has arguably what, what's a kitchen up there. How do you propose to use that attic space?
Just as extra, like an extra rec room. Extra space, extra, maybe for arts and crafts or something.
And it would be your proposal that you would consider or would agree to remove, so it's not a functioning kitchen up there?
Yes.
Alright. And then there's also a basement in this structure, correct?
Yes.
What are you gonna use the basement for?
For storage and for recreation also, because it's, it's partially finished.
Alright, so there's no intention of putting a bedroom in the attic?
No.
No intention of putting a bedroom in the basement?
No.
And why can't you do that anyway as a practical matter?
Right, we're not allowed to.
And when you say you're not allowed to, who won't allow that?
DDD and licensing, because we're a licensed group home. We have to go by the licensing standards.
Alright. And with that licensing, does that come with, you know, inspections and, and follow-up?
Yes.
Okay.
Very often.
Alright. And you're gonna have a vehicle for the residents? What kind of vehicle will that be?
Probably a minivan, which is, we have two minivans now.
Okay. And you'll have space, I guess, for the two residents to, to park, correct?
For the two residents?
I'm not residents, the supervisors, I'm sorry.
Right, so we'll have space for two DSPs, which will be on shift. And then the third is for supervisor that will come occasionally to supervise the house.
Okay.
Mr. Salvaggi?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm confused, because at the beginning of the hearing, there was some discussion about no more than five op- occupants, and there are four bedrooms, and I thought I heard somewhere else, four, four occupants?
That's it.
Can we clear that out? Is it, is it four occupants or what?
So there's five, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
So there's five bedrooms, but right now we are only allowed to have four residents? That could change if they allow us to have a fifth, but that's not on the table right now for us.
Alright, no, because that was not clear.
Yeah.
Why is that?
They have to come out and inspect and make sure that it's adequate, and it's also based on the people that we choose to, to live in the house. They have to make sure that it's not, you know, they're trying to get away from institutional living, right? For, for our, the demographic that we serve, and that's how they do it. They, they don't want a lot of people living in that type of, you know. I think it's on the main floor.
Second floor.
Yeah, second floor.
Oh.
Now, if you were to add, i- if DDD at some point were to agree to allow that fifth resident, it doesn't change your staffing obligations. Still have two staff at all times?
Correct. Yeah, it's based on their tier, their tier level, you know, and their need, and, and that's, it's all based on that. It's individual, individualized of how many, how many DSPs, but we, we will not have more than. It's individual, individualized of how many, how many DSPs, but we, we will not have more than two people on shift.
Are the staff on shift?
Sorry?
Are the staff on shift?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And what are, what's the shift, twelve hours, eight hours?
The shifts are, um, if people are in the house, we have to stop at nine to three. And then it's three to eleven and then eleven to nine.
Thanks, that's, just wanna clarify that.
And you'll have two people on staff at all times?
Correct. It's not during the day. If nobody's home, we don't have to have anybody there.
And then the ba- the attic itself, so there's a kitchen in the attic, are you getting rid of the kitchen?
Yes.
Yes.
And, but the bathroom will stay in the attic?
I mean, if it could, yeah, if it can, I'd like it to.
Yeah, we'd keep the bathroom.
And then the attic will serve as recreation?
Yes.
Along with the basement?
Yeah.
But you will get rid of the kitchen?
Yes.
Should we make that a condition of approval if we are so inclined to approve?
That's fine by us.
All right.
DDD wouldn't allow us to have a kitchen up there.
I understand, but this is the board's approval, I just wanna, okay. Do any of your uh, residents age out?
They don't, they haven't, um, it depends on their need, um, you know. The residents that we have are on the younger side, um, yeah, so I haven't come into that. But the, the idea is that they don't age out, right? Unless they need to have different, you know, if they have different needs, then they would not fit into the, to the home. But no, it's.
Are your residents like eighteen and older or are they teenagers?
Twenty-one and older.
Twenty-one and older.
And are they all male or female?
Um, it doesn't, it, it could be either or. It, it does, it, they can have mixed female or male.
And anybody have a criminal history?
No.
Will they get jobs in the community?
Yeah, absolutely. If that's one of their goals, they will. That, that's like, that's very high on, on, you know, i- if, if, that's what we want to do. You know, we want to be part of the community, so yeah, definitely.
You said that when they come back from their classes, they would walk around. Do they walk supervised or?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, deal.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That answers that question, good. Continue.
All right, uh, if you guys don't have any more questions for Wendy?
Let me check with the board. Anybody from the board have any questions of the testimony just given?
Yeah, I just, I think you're just gonna have a nurse on staff, so is the nurse part of the two people that are on staff at all times?
No.
Okay, so is it?
We're not required to have a nurse on staff at all times.
You just have somebody available.
We have, yeah, she, she, um, our nurse is there, our, our RN is just there to make sure that medications are there. She has eyes on our guys to make sure that, you know, nobody's sick or nobody, you know, has anything going on that needs attention. Um, but she's not on staff twenty-four seven.
So the nurses are called in like an ad hoc basis?
Correct.
Okay.
So you were the one that, that converted the building over in West?
Yes.
One of the things when we gave the approval, we thought it was gonna go quickly, didn't go quickly. And it was a mess, I mean, a mess for a long time, like grass that was two to three feet high. Construction was delayed for a long, long period of time. And I thought on the testimony that we had that night, it was gonna go pretty quickly. Was there a problem back then? Cause the reason why I'm asking it, is there gonna be a problem now with what you're gonna try to do on the conversion here?
I don't know if I'm really qualified to answer that question. Do, I mean, what was the holdup? I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, she, I mean.
I mean, there was a holdup with um, the, the sprinklers and the, having to put the, the pipe out to the road. I remember that.
Sir, if, Bill Byrne, who was the architect on that project is here, he could probably elaborate on that. Wendy isn't, and oversee the construction part of it.
So what is your timeframe that it's gonna, if this is approved?
I think we're gonna start right away. I mean, Bill can speak to that. You know, we're gonna go over there after this meeting right now.
And I think you'll hear too, this is an, this is an easier conversion than the other one, yes.
That was a major.
Yes.
But it was a major headache for the community.
Right.
From the timing. And that, that was disappointing, because we were all in favor of that, very excited to see it was gonna get done. And it just took way too long.
On a happy note, it is beautiful inside.
Thank you.
We're in there quite a bit with the fire departments.
Sorry, I know.
We're just there, I think, sadly.
Yeah.
But then, I mean, inside is gorgeous.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Okay.
You are a tenant in that building, you don't own the building?
I'm sorry?
You were a tenant in the building?
Hudson Hills a tenant in the building.
Those are owned by the Yacht House City.
Correct.
Do I stand the tax rules?
What, I didn't hear you?
Yes. Yeah, cause Hudson Hills, uh, the last testimony was that it's not a not-for-profit. So because it's a for-profit entity, it's not eligible for a tax exempt status.
Yeah, but even though we can't use that as a basis for acceptance or denial.
Our architect is prepared to talk about that.
Um, but getting back to what Morgan was saying, on the other one, uh, there was another application uh, in that air, that general area. And a lot of people had a problem with the residents in the group home, basically wandering free.
In our home?
Yeah, there was testimony. Trying to remember if he was given a testimony.
Yeah, we weren't opened yet. They, somebody came in and they were concerned about that, I think. But yeah, we weren't there yet.
So, so if one of the residents uh, gets a job in town, for example, and they have to walk to work, they will be supervised on that walk? Or will it depend upon?
It'll depend on um, what their, what's in their um, ISP. Their, their, in their um, plan, in their plan of care, basically. Um, but, you know, we have people that have jobs now and we take them to their job. So they would be supervised, because base, i- i- if it's in their plan that they can walk to work, then they can walk to work. But for the most part, we walk them to work or we drive them to work.
So all the, are all the residents in or out at the same time?
In and out at the same time. Around, roughly around, I mean, for the day, for daytime, um, usually out, yeah, by eight thirty, eight, eight thirty. And home around three, from three to four. Some, some residents go to the same day program, some president, some residents go to a different day program. So it's not all at the same place, but a lot of coming and going. And some day programs pick up, you know, residents and we don't have to use our car, transportation. They, they provide transportation.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody from the audience have any questions of the testimony just given? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, we'd now like to get into some of the engineering issues. Matt DeWitt? Well, I found out, oh, go ahead.
Do you saw, we swerved the testimony you were about to give at this moment, with the truth, so I'll be got.
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Sure, it's Matthew DeWitt, D E W I T T.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Mr. Salvaggi, your, your?
Yes, thank you. And I found out tonight that Mr. DeWitt is a graduate of Immaculatus.
That is right, that is true.
He's a kind of a hometown guy, so uh.
Yep.
Anyway, um, after you graduated from high school, uh, what did you do to lead you up to uh, being qualified here? Hopefully as a civil engineer?
Sure, so I do have a bachelor degree from NGIT. Um, and I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, um, for over um, fourteen years. I've testified over to um, thirty, forty different municipalities throughout the state for a similar.
Name three locally, please.
What's that?
Name three locally?
Um, Raritan, um, Middlesex, Sareville.
Okay, good.
Union, so.
Thank you.
And your license is?
Current, correct.
Yep. All right.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Matt, why don't you walk us through, I know there's not a lot of engineering issues.
Sure.
But there are some conditions and I, I know Mr. Cole had called out some topics for us to address as well.
Correct. Yeah, just for the record on the location, um, we are obviously at twenty-five West High Street, Somerville, block one thirteen, lot one. Um, the site is located on the southeast corner of West High Street and Maple Street. Um, is, it is located in the borough's P, POR zone, which is a professional office, one family residence. Total property size is zero point one two six acres to the deed line, which is just past the sidewalk by Maple Street. Um, and then zero point one one acres to the right-of-way line, as there is a um, street right, right-of-way that comes on to the property just past the, the sidewalk. Um, under existing conditions, as we've discussed, it is, it is the standalone two and a half story um, structure that is, was, is where it was to use as a professional office. Um, and the rear of it right now is completely paved, um, you know, up to the neighboring houses on Maple Street. Um, all bulk z- bulk zoning conditions remain the same, um, except for impervious coverage, which was mentioned. Um, I believe we're going from, we're going from seventy-six percent? Yeah, down to sixty-five percent, so, um, I know one of the comments from Mr. Cole's letter was regard to stormwater. Um, and that regards the grades in the back and in the front and the side are all gonna be the same, same runoff patterns. Um, however, with the reduction of impervious coverage, it's gonna improve the situation. There'll be less runoff, um, especially with the, with the proposed lawn area back there. Um, so it should improve the condition of, of runoff, you know, coming on to Maple Street. Um, roof drains are all intended to function as they are, uh, which do discharge through um, openings in the curb on Maple Street. Um, and then, so proposed conditions, really the only site changes are in the back. Instead of all pavement, the intent is to create a um, a fenced-in patio area for the residents as well as a lawn, a lawn areas, um, an area of lawn. And then, um, the remaining area just past the curb facing Maple Street would be four parking spaces. Um, that would stretch the thirty five, thirty-six feet of the existing curb cut. Um, that, that really summarizes the, the proposed improvements. Um, also, in response to Mr. Cole's letter, the applicant is okay with planting the, some street trees. I believe three were requested and that's, that's agreeable to the applicant. So that would be part of the site work, as well as trimming some of the existing landscaping. Um, I believe that came up as well.
So will that alleviate any waiver or anything like that on that issue?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna confirm.
We'll, I, I believe also, Matt, you had testified that the sidewalk actually, you know, is into the right-of-way?
Correct.
Um, and Mr. Cole had asked for an easement.
Mm-hmm.
To the, to the borough, so, and the language, we can figure out. But the minister, uh, the applicant has no objection to.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's really to protect the applicant.
Yes, exactly.
It's not, it's just.
Correct.
It's basically looking out for the best interest of the applicant there, in case there's a trip and fall.
Yep.
It's a lot cleaner if it's in the right-of-way as opposed to on private property, right?
That's exactly right, so we'll, we'll agree to that. And however mechanically that gets done, whether I go through uh, Mr. Gibbons or, or the borough attorney. Um, you know, Matt, I meant to ask you, there's a sign in, in front of that building now.
Mm-hmm.
What's the plan for that sign?
I believe it's to remain.
Okay.
As I understand it.
And it will just call out, you know, uh, the, the applicant or?
The address.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's it gonna call out?
Just the address of the property.
Right.
Yeah. It's not gonna call out like group home for developmentally disabled, it'll just be the address. So that when people come to pick up residents or whatever, so yeah.
Yeah, the, the site plan or the plot plan shows it to be, to be removed. We're saying that's gonna be changed to remain.
Yeah.
Just as long as it's compliance.
That's right.
With the borough, the, or ordinance and lies. I just haven't checked that, cause the note was to be removed on the plans.
Mm-hmm.
Also in regards to the sidewalk, um, the applicant, I believe another comment was to re-level it or to kind of.
Yeah, there is, it seems it has settled a little bit next to the curb. There's a tripping hazard there.
So, yeah, the applicant does agree to address that as well as uh, mill and repave.
Yeah.
The uh, pavement to remain.
Yeah, I had a question about the thickness, whether, just whether you can, is, there's something to mill?
Right, right, right.
Uh, if we can check that, should the board approve it, that, that the thickness is suitable for milling? If it's not suitable, it's too thin, then it's just ripping it out and reconstructing it or repaving it.
Got it.
Now, Matt, I wanted to ask you, uh, with the removal of uh, some of the impervious of, uh, coverage in the back um, and kind of the realignment for the parking, is there adequate space for the four vehicles we propose to be back there?
Yes, we're proposing a standard parking stall, which is nine by, actually a foot longer than a standard, I believe. If they're nine by nineteen proposed, which typically you'd see nine by eighteen. Um, and then in regards to the number of stalls, I know by zoning, three is required. We're proposing four. And I believe the intent there, or, you know, to why we need the fourth, is with the two full-time staff, you know, let's say they'd be parked there along with the van during shift change. You know, let's say the new staff member comes in, they park in the fourth spot while the other employee leaves. So it's kind of like a, it could be used as kind of a, you know, transfer spot, right, during shift changes. Um, and as far as just, you know, the overall traffic or, you know, maneuvering of cars, it's real, we really only see it um, happening at the shift changes, which is only three throughout the day. So really, you know, there's not gonna be, it's not like it's a coffee shop where there's tons of cars coming in and out. This is a very, um, in, you know, three times a day, maybe more with the van to take people here and there. But we don't see this as a very active um, situation, where you're gonna have cars in and out of that driveway.
And what are we proposing, cause some of, as Wendy had testified, there's a shift change i- in the evening hours, I think eleven o'clock. Um, what do we propose uh, for lighting so that, you know, the staff coming and going can do that uh, safely?
Yeah, so I believe there are two, like, uh, mounted lantern lights on each side of the door. So I believe the applicant was gonna, you know, first and check those for adequacy. But definitely need some kind of um, you know, egress, ingress of the folks walking from the van to the door. Um, so one idea was like a shielded, um, you know, building mounted down light just to the immediate back area, uh, back door to the parking area. And then obviously to the, you know, um.
So there will be exterior lighting and it'll be done in accordance with the borough ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, correct, correct.
Yeah, so, because, just so the board knows, it's a plot plan and the checklist doesn't require lighting, because it's not technically a site plan application. At least I don't interpret it that way, cause it's handling a single-family home.
Yeah, so I think the first step is the, the existing lighting would be evaluated. If we need to supplement it.
It's a small site.
It'll be per code.
I don't see a heavy lift, but just so the board knows, it's not an oversight from the applicant. It's not on there, because it's not required by the checklist for the type of application it is. I think, Matt, I, um, I think you addressed, um, you're gonna add, I don't know if you had indicated, we'll add Mr. Cole, um, in article Roman numeral four, six.
Yep.
Ask for a fence detail.
Yes.
Uh, we're gonna provide that, um, and I.
The landscape notes, we'll, we'll add those.
Right.
As well.
Any consideration to stacking the cars that would reduce the driveway and allow people not to back out on Maple Street? You come in like clockwise movement between executive properties, which is to the south. There's an easement there.
Correct.
It's tight between the buildings.
It is tight.
If you do it that way, you, I agree that Maple Street is not a heavily trafficked and I also understand that we're not talking about huge.
Yep.
Traffic coming off the site. It would just reduce it and you would. It would just reduce it, and you would be facing out potentially. If you came around, you would just drive out onto Maple Street, as opposed to backing out. That's where I was coming from.
Right, I think that was considered, but just with the narrowness, I think it's only nine feet, nine or ten feet between the two buildings. And by doing that, that would eliminate the lawn and probably most of the patio, which I believe the applicant would like to use as an outdoor space, so that, that's, you know, kind of why we arrived at just the four, you know, spots along Maple instead of the pull-through.
So when the residents go to work in the morning, or come home after their morning events, they can, from nine to three, they were talking about, where are they being picked up and dropped off?
I believe it would be, is it right in the parking stall?
So, it could be in the front or the parking stall. Like, when they, they could go out the back door and, right, to get in the van, the van will be there. So they'll come out the back door, they'll go through the gate, and the parking spots will be right there, and they'll get in right there.
And to the extent, and I know this is a little unorthodox, I'll ask one, for some of the programs that actually provide transportation, they'll be picked up?
Probably in the front.
In the front, yes. And just so, if you've seen the plan, the front of, the very front of the building is no parking allowed anyway. It's striped off there, so it'd be kind of a natural spot, just for the van to stop and allow them to board. But I think, rather than going through each one of Mike's comments, I think we've tried to address those that pertain to the engineering. We'll do the same thing with the architectural in a moment. But if Mr. Cole, if we've missed anything, please let us know.
I just don't know, the sump pumps, is that going to be the architect? I had some comments about inspection in the building. I don't know if?
Yeah.
Bill is going to address that?
Yeah, Bill will handle that.
Okay.
Anybody from the board have any questions on Mr. DeWitt? Anybody from the audience? Thank you, Mr. DeWitt.
Thank you.
Alright. Mr. Byrne?
Good evening, Mr. Byrne. Could you please stand and raise your right hand? You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Please state your last name, and please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Sure, it's William Byrne, B Y R N E.
Thank you very much. Do you need an easel? I think we're trying to get one for you.
Probably be helpful, sure.
Bill, while they're trying to retrieve the easel, you were here actually as recently as March, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, he was accepted as an architect at that point, and Bill, your license is still current since March, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. We do have, we have our own easel.
Thank you.
Oh, very good, thank you.
So, Bill, you were the architect responsible for the preparation of the plans and the design of the, we're not doing much on the outside, obviously, but the interior layout, correct?
That's correct.
I wonder, should we kind of walk us through, I guess first, we'll start with what it's going to look like from the outside, and then we'll move to inside.
Sure. So, what we have here is sheet one of our submission, and this sheet reflects the exterior elevations, the four sides of the building, primarily as they exist today. The only changes that are being proposed are the removal of two windows on the left side elevation. That's the area that was discussed by our engineer, that's a nine or ten-foot space between the buildings. So again, that elevation's not highly visible from any of the other neighbors. And again, we're just removing two existing windows. The siding material will be replaced, so again, it's not, they aren't the only windows on that side. We don't feel like it has a very significant impact on the building.
Okay, so let's kind of slide into now the proposed interior layout or floor plans.
So what we have here is sheet number two of our submission, as submitted. And this reflects the changes that are being proposed to the building, which again, are not very significant. We have a basement plan here, which is obviously the lower level. The basement's not fully underground, there are some pretty nice windows around the perimeter, typical of old homes, certainly in this area, High Street. And parts of the basement are finished, to the left and to the right of the stairway, there's a small finished room here, and there are some parts that are unfinished. And so, those areas are going to be retained, and I think as Wendy had testified, they'll be used for some recreational purposes. There was a question on Mr. Cole's report as to the ceiling height down there, and we did verify that the ceiling height in those finished areas is approximately six foot seven inches, so. Not, not super high, but not so bad for a basement.
And there's no bathroom or kitchen facilities on that basement level?
There is a half-bath on this level, there's a sink and a toilet, along with some mechanical equipment. No kitchen or cooking facilities, however.
Okay.
To the right side of the sheet is our main level plan, and again, not significant changes, a few minor changes. We are enhancing the size of the kitchen to some extent, just to be more appropriate for the family dining and the family use. And again, we are adding a laundry room here on this floor as well, just carving out space from what's there currently, which is primarily offices and office-type spaces. We are designated bedroom in this back right corner, which that space is currently an existing office, as the remainder of the second floor would be. But otherwise, there's not a significant amount of change occurring here. It's a beautiful building and nicely kept.
Okay. Now we'll move on to the second floor and the attic space.
To the left side of the sheet, and I will say that this drawing has been revised since our original submission, so I'm assuming we want to enter this as an exception.
I'd like to have it marked in as evidence.
Yeah, A1.
Make it A1 with today's date. Thank you.
And Bill, while you're doing that, this was in response to, I guess, some of the questions we're going to get to in a moment that Mr. Cole had raised, correct?
It is, and I'll defer some of the explanation until I get to the items in his report. But what wasn't changed was the plan that we had for the upper level, the second floor. And again, the work that we are showing here is really just the creation or division of two closets to allow for each of the bedrooms to have a closet. And again, those rooms are currently used as an office. Obviously, the house was at some point a residence, and a very nice one. And when it was converted to office space, I don't think the changes were all that significant. I think they just did a very typical residential to commercial conversion from residential. And we do have two bathrooms that we have on this floor. One is existing without change, and the second one is receiving a shower and an adjustment to the sink area. And that's really the reason that we have to remove that window, is just because it's going to be in front of a sink otherwise. The attic plan represents the condition that exists today. Again, that attic space is finished, it's a full walk-up stairway, so the stair is not unusual in these older homes. Extends up to that attic floor, and that is just an open space finished. Obviously, there's dormers in the front and the two sides, and a partial dormer to the rear for the stairway. We've got a full bath here with a tub, fairly small. And we have a small run of cabinetry, which includes a stove, a sink, and a refrigerator. And as previously testified, we would be removing the kitchen from this for future use. I know in discussions that we had, we would like the ability to keep that sink on this floor, just because it's currently there. And I think as Wendy had mentioned, it may get used as a craft room. It may be helpful to have that sink there, if that would be okay. But otherwise, we'd be certainly willing to remove the cooking component or anything that would technically qualify it as a kitchen.
Now, Mr. Cole in his report, and I think this goes to the yellow, if you will, had raised a question about whether this is a full attic, a half-story, full-story. You've had an opportunity to look into that, and what's your opinion as to that issue?
So, again, Mr. Cole had raised the question that this area that is completed could technically qualify as a story if it didn't meet the definition of a half-story. And for the benefit of the board, a half-story would consist of the space under a sloping roof that has the line of intersection of the roof and wall face, not more than three feet above the floor level, in which space the possible floor area with headroom above five feet, I'm sorry, five feet or less occupies at least forty percent of the total area of the floor directly beneath. I'm sure you guys have had this explained to you a million times, so I won't.
Mr. Cole taught a class on this.
Yes, I had a feeling he did, because when you read it at first, it was a little confusing. I know my guy and I read through it, and we're like, we dealt with this before, wait, what is this saying? And, but I think we've got it. So again, what we did for the benefit of the board is just run some calculations. The floor below nine hundred seventy-one square feet, so that's the, that would be what's here on the floor directly below. The area highlighted on this plan represents the area that's five feet or lower. And this qualifies because the roof at the perimeter rests on the wall plate below. So that wall meets the definition, it's not three foot or higher, it's three, it's lower than three feet. And so again, we added a dotted line, and we highlighted an area that designates the area five foot or less. So the area five foot or less is four hundred fifty-nine square feet, again, the total at nine seventy-one. So we're forty-seven point three percent. Therefore, we meet the requirement.
Requirement, and this qualifies then as what?
To be determined as a half-story, not a full-story.
Okay. Now, when we do that count?
The purpose of this, for the board knows, is to get the proofs right, in terms of, it's a C variance for height. If the height, and Cliff chime in, if the height is a story, complies with the height but not the stories, it's a C variance. If the height is greater than ten percent.
Right.
It's a D variance.
It becomes a D variance.
So I just want to call out to make sure that the record's right, on whether this is a C variance for height or not. It's not per UCC, as Ed will chime in, for UCC, it's a different story. But for this, for the purposes of zoning, this is what he's doing.
Well, we've concluded it's a C, correct?
No, he's saying it's not a C. He's saying it complies with the half-story definition.
Right, the space that exists on this attic would comply as a definition for a half-story, correct?
So there's no relief required for the height or the story.
Correct.
For this district.
Correct.
That's what I want, that's what we want to know.
Right.
And to differentiate that, as you pointed out, the UCC has a definition that would consider the ability to use this space in a residential purpose as a habitable attic, which has a totally different definition than the local ordinance does. Not, you know, not so distinct, it's kind of the same idea, just technically, it's worded a little bit differently. Yeah, that's okay.
Now, with this layout, I know Mr. Cole had raised a question, building going to be sprinklered, not sprinklered? It's sprinklered, how so? You've looked at that, and obviously, it's part of an architect's responsibility. What's the proposal here?
Well, again, I think when that question had come up in Mr. Cole's report, and I think it was a question that was derived from the fire official, it was indicated that, obviously, the building in its present use, or its proposed use, would require sprinklers. And that is technically correct. And essentially, what it is, is that the New Jersey code would stipulate that this falls under a use group R3, essentially, five or fewer persons receiving custodial care. A facility with five or fewer persons receiving custodial care shall be classified as a use group R3, and shall comply with the IRC, providing an automatic fire sprinkler system is installed in accordance with Sections nine oh three of the International Residential Code. So basically, in reviewing that section of the code, what would be required by the construction code would be a sprinkler system for the full building that would comply with the residential sprinkler system standards. Now, in the request of the local fire official, his request was that he would like to see that enhanced to be a full sprinkler system, not a residential sprinkler system. You know, again, I think there's a lot of reasons why we would prefer not to do that. However, in discussions with my client, and discussions prior to the hearing, it's been determined that we would be willing to comply with that request, and provide a full sprinkler system in the entire building.
The code requires a thirteen D. I think Bobby was asking for a thirteen R. I don't think he's asking for a regular thirteen system.
So a thirteen R, we can accept that, yes.
Yeah.
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 I mean, thirteen D is, it protects the egress, that's all.
Yeah.
For thirteen, it's a little more enhanced.
A little bit more relaxed, yeah.
And we could agree, Mr. Gibbons, that would be a condition of, you know?
Thirteen R is, will be condition of approval. Okay, thank you.
One of the other things that came up under Mr. Cole's comments with the architectural is the property has three electrical meters. I don't know if you know why that is, and there was a question about maybe kind of consolidating them into one.
It would be hard to say why that was, this may not be working really well, so I'll try to speak loudly. We haven't gotten that far into our investigation as far as the interior work, which again, is not that significant as to why there might have been three meters, but the assumption is that the building is broken into different sections. Possibly, there's a meter served in the basement, and hard to say. But we would certainly be willing and we would desire to remove any that we reasonably could, but we're not looking to do what we did on eighty-seven West End, where we gutted the whole building, which again, I think greatly added to the time, because obviously, we found a few skeletons in the closet, that sort of thing. So in this case, though, that's not what we're proposing here. So to the extent feasible or reasonable, we will absolutely remove those extra meters. We are going to have to try to converge sub panels and things like that, but, so I think we would agree to the extent possible to do that.
And, Bill, your reference to the other property, and the board's concerns about the delay and everything else, just to kind of fill that space in or answer those questions, what was some of the reasons for the delay? I mean, you just mentioned, one, we also, wasn't there, there was a delay because the conversion of the attic in that building?
So that's correct, there was, that particular building, there wasn't.
Please speak into the microphone.
It doesn't appear to be working.
All right, let's.
It's battery-operated, it's possible to battery-stick.
Here. Oh, no, it's red. Is that good?
It's battery-operated, it doesn't have a lot of battery.
So talk fast.
Talk fast.
Okay, great.
Got ten seconds, go.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, what was the question again?
No, the delay on eighty-seven.
Construction delay. We filed for demolition permit, obviously, to expose what we could as far as what was in there, because there was a lot going on with the full sprinkler system we had installed. Again, that was a conversion to a two-family, so we had four bedrooms or, you know, residents per unit. It was sort of a different level of intensity than what we're proposing here. So there was some time taken in that, that there was some issues with scope in the sewer line, if I remember correctly. We had to, again, bring in a full water, new water service line, so that created some delays just in approvals and road opening permits and things like that. I think especially with that scoping, there was some time delays. The ramping, I think, changed a little bit, because there was some grading concerns or questions as to how we would best be able to do that. So I felt like there was, and to the credit of the construction official, who I feel like, you know, we were back and forth on several things there, excellent to work with. I mean, I just would like to compliment, just having such professionals on the staff here is just a pleasure compared to a lot of places that we work. So again, there were delays, but.
And in the attic, because we had to come back, correct?
We did have to come back, because it was determined that although part of the attic was finished when that house was built, it wasn't really being used, it didn't seem feasible to use it. But as we got into the project and realized that we could get the HVAC equipment to the sides, you know, that attic level became very practical.
So given your intimate familiarity with that project, and looking at what's going on here, should the board expect this to come online much faster than the last?
It absolutely should, there's.
There's really very little.
There it goes.
I can probably.
Use that one, please.
Okay, I can even sit down.
Yeah, you can probably sit, yeah.
Because of the level of finish that we have on this building, and the level of work that's being performed, I don't, wouldn't expect nearly the duration of time for construction. There's very little exterior work, so I wouldn't anticipate seeing a lot going on. I can't necessarily speak to the parking, but I would assume the same. It doesn't seem like an extensive amount of work.
Okay. And, I know you're not here to justify the FAR, but the calculation came in at sixty-eight point three seven percent. That calculation, we're not doing anything to exacerbate that, that's just current conditions, correct?
That's correct, yeah, there's nothing that we're doing that's increasing the floor area in any way, and we're really not proposing a change, so.
All right. I don't have anything further from Mr. Byrne. I hope we addressed Mr. Cole's comments. I hope we addressed Mr. Cole's comments in the course of his testimony.
You're basically saying you have no issues with the comments in the report, like, we didn't really say about televising the sanitary sewer, but it was just covered saying we'll address that, we'll comply with that. So I think they've covered most of the issues, we didn't go over every little point, but the blanket statement saying they will comply with it addresses them.
What was the comment about the sump pump?
Sump pump was inspected, sump pump to make sure there's no, there's no connection that shouldn't be in the sanitary sewer. The sanitary sewer connection is unless they can show BVC, whatever, just televise it to show the integrity of the line. With the change of ownership of the sanitary sewer, anything on the street is now New Jersey Americans' responsibility, so in reality, it's from the cleanup and the building, in this case, it can't be more than twenty feet or thirty feet, because the building where it sits, that was that comment. And then there was a question about if utilities have to be upgraded, looking, putting them in the ground, but the testimony essentially is we're not looking to do that.
Right.
To the extent possible to consolidate the meters. It's everybody's best interest, because you pay, whether you use electricity or what, everybody pays the twenty dollars monthly charge.
Meter first, right. Yeah, the meter fee, sure.
So there is, right.
Yeah, there's a big advantage and a reason the applicant would want to do that, so I think we certainly will as it's possible. I think you had a point too on the number eight regarding new air conditioning or HVAC equipment, and we're not really proposing any, it's probably over-service currently because the uses, professional office had higher standards than we would as residential, so we'll be okay with that, and they look to be a good repair.
And I always say this, if you're increasing bedrooms, the new policy from the SRVSA is they want to determine whether there's a connection fee, and they're taking the policy or the position that the county's taking, that they want to see every application to see if there's a connection fee and make that determination. So it's in here, they're adding technically two bedrooms, so in theory, does the flow go off from the site potentially versus an office? It's, to me, it's de minimis, I don't anticipate a connection fee charge, but the SRVSA will make that determination.
Mr. Salvaggi, can we make Mr. Cole's report, compliance with Mr. Cole's report a condition of approval if the board is so inclined to approve the application?
Yes.
Very good.
And that reminds me, I wanted to, and Wendy can be here to authenticate it, Mr. Cole had raised a question about underground storage tanks.
Yes.
And that. So as part of the due diligence prior to purchasing the property, the applicant had a tank sweep done, and this is, Mark, this A2, I believe we're on, and this is.
Thank you.
Results of that tank sweep was confirmed that there was, in fact.
Fantastic.
Nothing underneath. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further from Byrne.
Anybody from the board have any questions on Mr. Byrne's testimony? Anyone from the audience? Okay, thank you, Mr. Byrne.
You're welcome.
All right, so as we had mentioned several times now, we do need that FAR variance, there's also some bulk variance relief that's triggered, you know, by the change of use in the property, so we're obligated under the law to provide planning testimony in support of that variance relief. So to my left is Mr. Hamilton, who will be here to offer that justification.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
William Hamilton, H-A-M-I-L-T-O-N.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Salvaggi?
Yes, Mr. Hamilton, if you could offer the board the benefit of your educational background, experience, and the status of your license, and anticipating the chair's question, three boards that.
Mr. Hamilton, have you appeared before us before?
You know, I was thinking about that, I can't remember that I've been before this board, I've been before most of the towns around here, Bridgewater, Raritan, Bedminster.
That's good enough.
And your planning license is valid?
It is.
Okay. So, Mr. Hamilton, we'll get right into it, I mean, we do need some variance relief, you've had an opportunity to review the materials, Mr. Cole's report, in your professional opinion, starting perhaps with the FAR, what's the justification for the board granting that relief here?
So, well, and you've heard that there's no changes to the footprint of the structure that's being presented tonight, but we do need to get relief, except for area width, depth, and frontage of the lot, as Mr. Cole pointed out in his letter in accordance with Section 201, 121A of your ordinance. And so we need a D4 as well as C variances associated with the application. Now, let's start with the D4. We're looking at the floor area ratio, existing condition is sixty-eight point three seven percent, whereas twenty-five percent is permitted by your code. The special reasons test for a D4 variance is a little different than a regular use variance in that we need to show that the site will accommodate any of the problems associated with the floor area larger than what is permitted by code, and clearly that's the case in this situation. We propose to reduce the number of parking, right now you can fit about six cars out at the site, we're down to four, and we're going to decrease the impervious coverage from roughly seventy-six percent to sixty-five percent. And there's really no other changes that relate to bulk standards that are proposed in the application. As I indicated, there's also a number of C variances, and I'm just going to list them first, the first is maximum improvement coverage, we're at sixty-five percent proposed, fifty percent is permitted by code, and right now there's seventy-six percent, as I mentioned earlier. Front yard, we've got twenty point six feet from West High Street, one point seven feet from Maple Street existing, and there's twenty-five feet is required by code. Side yard, two point seven feet exists, eight point seven feet is required. Parking, we have zero setback, the way the parking is proposed, and that's existing, and we also, I'm sorry, there's five foot is required by code. Maximum driveway width, as you heard Matt explain, is sixty feet, thirty-six feet existing, and twenty-five feet is required by code. With regard to the C variances, release is justified in our opinion under the C2 criteria, where a purpose of planning, as outlined in the municipal land use law, would be advanced by the granting of the deviation, and the benefits of granting that deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment, detriment, excuse me. And there's three goals of planning that we think are advanced, the first is promotion of public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, the second is to provide adequate light, air, and open space, and the third is to provide specific space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses to meet the needs of New Jersey residents. The variance, we believe, is justified based upon the projected use of the site, which is essentially inherently beneficial use, which by nature promotes the general welfare. Impervious cover is being reduced, we think that's going to add to open space goal of improving the open space, and then with regard to the negative criteria, we have to look at that from both the D variance as well as the C variance perspective. All these variances, we believe, can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the zone plan and zoning ordinance. This is a permitted use with an existing structure, with very minor site improvements, as you've heard testimony to. The proposal is consistent with your 2019 master plan stated goal to provide a range of housing types that meet the resident population needs and preserve established residential areas within Somerville itself. In addition, it promotes the master plan policy of strengthening business and retail activity in the central business district by supplying residents nearby in this group home that's being proposed. We do have one exception, which is the curbing, which was mentioned earlier, for the parking spaces, none exists today, and we do not propose one. We believe that that request to be reasonable and within the general purpose and intent of the regulation.
Just as an aside too, I mean, you could probably make an argument that even a C1 would be, I mean, everything is there, I mean, you know, there's, you know.
You could make the argument of a C1 as well.
And I said a C1 variance, which is, you know, you're facing a hardship, because what's already there.
It's an existing condition.
Yeah. And, and again, nothing, the bulk variances that we've referenced, none of those were triggered by what this applicant is proposing.
That's correct.
And even if it was being used in a commercial context, the town would be faced with, or this property would be faced with the similar bulk variance non-conformities.
Absolutely.
And I guess along those same lines, even with the FAR.
That's true, that's true, it's an existing condition.
So.
I believe under Section Four, maybe you've touched on this, and I, you know, I think you're also, it's also an argument that you could consider this inherently beneficial use.
Yes.
Which would essentially obviate the need, well, I take the position that it largely obviates the need to prove the positive criteria, because it already presumptively proves it. Again, I'll leave that to you, it was just my thought, I didn't hear that, so I just thought I would mention that.
I think that's, that's true, I did mention that it was inherently beneficial use, which would satisfy the positive criteria.
Right, okay, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Gibbons, it's, Somerville's rather unique, because you guys have gone out and recognized this as a permitted use in this zone. I don't, I don't think that takes away from the inherent benefit of the use, but, but I agree, and Mr. Hamilton, to your point, even under the D4, while it's inherently beneficial use, this property can still accommodate the issues.
Right.
Created with that, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Just for the completeness of the record, I thought I'd mention that.
I appreciate it, thank you. I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further from Mr. Hamilton, and, you know, perhaps the board or Mr. Cole may have questions.
Anybody from the board have any questions on the testimony given by Mr. Hamilton? Anybody from the audience?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just have to do that.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're concluded, I would hope that through the course of our four witnesses, we've addressed the board's concerns, the issues that Mr. Cole had raised in his report. We are here, it's kind of unique, the use itself is a residential use, which doesn't necessarily prompt a site plan, as Mr. Cole has noted, although we have tried to address a lot of site plan related questions. I believe, as Mr. Hamilton has just concluded, the FAR, use variance, this property's been there, it's been there for many, many years, and that FAR has been kind of, you know, part and parcel of the property, our use certainly is not going to, our use will certainly be compatible and can be accommodated on the property. The bulk variances, we're not doing anything to exacerbate them, that's their current conditions. However, the applicant, you know, in an effort to, you know, provide some more green space for its residents, is removing approximately eleven, twelve percent of the coverage, which does, you know, reduce the impervious surface, helps with the ground, excuse me, stormwater. So I believe on balance, we've been able to establish that the relief, the use and bulk variance relief is appropriate here, and I know Mr. Gibbons will go through, but, you know, we've agreed to a number of conditions Mr. Cole's presented, you know, including the removal of that kitchen on the third floor, planting of the street trees, re-leveling of the sidewalk, and again, I'm sure there's others that I've probably missed, but we appreciate the courtesies extended to us, and, you know, if there's any more questions, we're certainly here to answer those.
Mike, you have anything?
No.
Someone want to move the closing the public portion of this application?
Move second.
Move the second, on the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The conditions that we have, the conditions that were, that are, have been established are, first of all, that the kitchen will be removed, the thirteen R sprinkler system will be installed, as discussed, street trees will be provided by the applicant, so that will obviate any need for a waiver, and, let's see, oh. Oh, that the existing side, that the side will be re-leveled according to the alternative, I want to make sure I understand this, it'll be re-leveled or will be essentially redug?
It will be re-leveled or repaired, whenever, to get rid of the tripping hazard.
Okay, and that, and that, compliance with Mr. Cole's report in addition, and our standard conditions of approval, and that should do it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, with the exception of the four parking stalls backing out, the applicant's proposing to keep that arrangement.
Will they be stacked, or?
No, they're, the applicant is saying that they don't prefer stacking, they prefer to have the four backing out in Maple Street, as opposed to stacking it.
Parking head in.
Right, and it is narrow between the two buildings, clockwise, and the flow of traffic coming off the site is very light, in my opinion, and Maple Street isn't heavily traveled, so I don't have a big objection to it. With that, I'm just calling out, that's an exception to the report, so that we're clear that the applicant, it's going to be that what's proposed in the plan is what is, should the board approve this, being approved.
Also too, I don't know, Mr. Gibbons, about the fire, the sprinkler system was another condition that we would agree to.
Thirteen R, correct?
Thirteen R, yes.
And I want to make sure, Rich, I know that's, you know, Rich and Ed, I mean, that's, that's as I understand it, it's thirteen R is the proper designation, okay, good.
And it's in my report, but approval from the fire marshal, he did specifically write a letter on this, he said, should the board have granted approval, I reflected saying he would request a thirteen R, and the system, the details of that system will go through his office. So approval with the fire marshal subsequent would be a condition of approval.
Okay, very good. And I think with that, we're, we've got it.
I don't have a problem with that, but when they remove the kitchen, you can not stay there.
Oh, the sink?
The sink, yeah.
We were going to put a bathroom, was there going to be a bathroom there anyway, or, I mean, again.
There's one up there already.
There's a full bath up there.
There's a full bathroom. We would just keep the sink, you know, just, you know, if they're, I don't see a problem with keeping the sink.
Yeah.
All right.
Sink stays.
All right.
Someone like to move the application?
I'll move.
Move. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Kerpenetz?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it. Congratulations.
For the rest of your summer, what's ever left.
I will coordinate the preparation of the resolution with your office, Mr. Salvaggi. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Miss Alainius.
Yep. Miss Alainius. One of my favorite places to find stuff. What do we have?
It's the 2023-009Z, it's 41 Fifth Street, compliance correspondence.
A little background for the board on this is, the board approved the C box and the use of the site for a landscaper. It was used previously by M&amp;A, which was a.
Tree.
Tree, a tree company that split wood and brought logs in, was primarily removal of trees. So it was a condition of approval that obviously it's in the flood hazard zone, so they need to get. they need to get DEP approvals or documentation to that extent. During that process, the original application had an office trailer, a salt dome, and mulch. He was initially flagged, or I asked the question, do you need a DEP permit for that? The applicant got back and said, yes, we're going to take it off, so it was taken off the plan, so it was this C-box, it was like five or six C-boxes shown on the plan. The board approved it. Subsequent is a condition always to get DEP approval or documentation. Is part of the.
Part of our standard conditions of approval.
Right. Is part of any structure in the flood hazard zone, DEP requirements is you have to anchor them. You can't, you have to tie them down, you can't have things floating in the flood. So during the compliance, which is the process of making sure they adhere to all the conditions, I reached out to Dave Myers, the CO, and said, is this a UCC construction item, being the anchoring of the C-boxes? His answer is absolutely, need a construction permit, I'll handle that. So during that process, when he, he was looking at this from an anchoring, I looked at it to help out in the buoyancy counts, because the plans did not show the specifics of the anchoring. During that process, it turns out that the general permit, which I knew there was a general permit for this, only allowed for 200 square feet of structures. So it doesn't appear that a general permit is applicable for this, given the multiple C-boxes on this application. So that was thrown back to Craig, Craig Stires, the applicant. And we're going back and forth on that, but you have one of the emails in front of you that came from the applicant's engineer. I think it was requested from Cliff to put that on the agenda. So that's your basic backup on what is going on with that project.
The general permit was for the zoning permit, or was that for UCC permit, the zoning permit?
The zoning permit was conditioned upon getting a DEP approval or documentation. The UCC permit, you're right, thank you for saying that. How it works is, for a UCC permit to be issued, you have to show, demonstrate prior approvals. A prior approval, in this case, would be a, well, in every case, is zoning approval, compliance with the board requirements, and DEP approval or documentation. And if it's general permit, you don't need a DEP permit, you automatically do it. So you're right, Ed, it was, it was flagged during zoning as a DEP approval needed, and it came up. I took a hands-off on, because I shouldn't be reviewing it if it's a UCC. I'm not inspecting it, it's a UCC issue. So I let the construction department, and I, I'm supportive. I don't take the lead, because I don't have jurisdiction. Why? Because a UCC permit's required. They're going to inspect it, and they're going to review it. So during that process, it came up to me, Michael, these plans don't show the anchoring at all, it doesn't show how many anchors, what's going on here. So I said, let's cut to the chase, I'll do the math, said the applicant's engineer in terms of what he has to do for this thing. And during that process, I went through the general permits, DEP general permission for flood hazard, and the 200 square foot came up. So I threw it back on the applicant. Look, there's already a C-box there, we have five or six, if you look at the quantity, there's no way this complies. Doesn't mean you can't do it, it just means you may need a different DEP approval. This board had approved it, but it's conditioned upon getting whatever you need from DEP to use this. So that.
Which is customary with the way we do every, every approval.
How big is the C-box?
Eight by 20, or eight by 40, or classically, and in this design, they show eight by 40s, like one or two eight by 20s. This is the design where you had C-boxes with the mast covering, so they can put equipment. So they had multiple C-boxes shown with a mast over it, structure, for getting stuff out of the rain.
So the rub is, we never got DEP approval?
We don't, we're, it's not through, it's not, the applicant's engineer is very versed, he just got an individual permit for a different application. So I'm taking a backseat showing, letting him, because he knows this well, to demonstrate that it's permissible, either by general permit or to obtain the individual permit, and the other avenue is a jurisdictional determination with DEP. Say to DEP, this is what I'm doing, what do I need? That's a jurisdictional. So it's still, the last email was, when we wind up, in '07, '08, there was two or three applications in front of the board, M&amp;A, to Mayor Joel was it? Was, M&amp;A is the tree guy, the application was to Mayor Joel. During that process, a DEP permit was obtained for the use, and I think for the one C-box out there. So in '07, '08, or '09, there was a DEP permit issued for the use. So to do this analysis, in my opinion, you should have the DEP permit. So we're, right now, the request came from the applicant's engineer to, do you have a copy of that permit? I reached out to, at that time, to Mayor Joel, it was done by Dave Stires, different engineer. Dave has a copy of the request, but he doesn't have a copy of the actual permit. I, I know the borough has it, but I did an Oprah request, too, so we need to get that, and I'm going to get that to the applicant's engineer. But the number, that's just, the question came up, is the existing C-box out there grandfathered or permissible under a different permit? Because the rule says that it's cumulath, you only allow 200 square feet cumulath from '07 on.
Right.
So I know there was a DEP permit issued for to Mayor Joel, I just don't know if that covered the C-box and what the interplay is with that C-box versus the six or seven additional C-boxes they want to use. The applicant's engineer needs this information to quantify exactly what the square footage of these buildings are. These are technically considered unoccupied structures, buildings, they're unoccupied, but they're still structures, they have a roof, blah, blah, blah.
Correct.
So, well, that's where that email came up from.
So what do you need from us?
I think this is just.
FYI?
Right.
Yeah, it's more FYI than anything else, and I was kind of surprised, but I, I wanted to make sure the board knew what we were up to.
I was chopping block.
What's it take to anchor a C-box?
Typically, you can use halo coils, a lot of cables, or some people pour a concrete pad, anchor them down.
They're quite buoyant.
We had, in '07, on our original approval, we had steel cables put in for the logs. If you look out there, there are I-beams, the logs are against, and the idea was, we're going to strap them during this, to do that. I, I think it used to be permissible to allow it to float like a dock with a tether. The new rules, the current rules, all right, which were recently revised, say you cannot do that. They have to be anchored, you cannot tether them. You know, if you put bollards around something, let it float up with the flood, just make sure the bollards will keep it there. Let it go up and down like a boat does in the tides, right, like a dock. I don't have a problem with that, the DEP says specifically that it is not permissible. You have to anchor it, you cannot allow the structures to float buoyancy. So. Right. So.
We can't, and we can't waive that, that's something.
It's a DEP, it's not a borough requirement, it is a DEP requirement. And the calc I came up with, with, these C-boxes, an eight by 20, weigh about 4,000 pounds empty. So you have to assume it's empty. The calculations came out with 69,000 pounds of buoyancy force popping it up. So if you take the 4,000, you have to anchor it with 65,000 pounds to keep those structures from popping.
And even a full one floats, so.
Right. So I.
One behind edge one ended up in the river.
But we're not even there yet, we took a step back, because before we can look at buoyancies in structure, is it permissible under a general permit? If it's not, then it has to be handled in an individual permit, which I think the DEP and the individual permit will tell you exactly how this is going to be handled, anchoring-wise. So we're a little bit of a delay, a snafu sort of big. During this whole process, it appears the property was sold. So the applicant in front of the board is not the applicant we're dealing with now. It was sold, and they're trying to occupy, which they can certainly occupy, the board approved it, it's just a question of the C-boxes. That's the only holdup, is these C-boxes, which frankly, I don't have control, the board doesn't have control, the borough doesn't have control. It's, if you look at the new flood hazard, you're looking at seven feet of water on that site, which we all know it, so it gets a lot of water.
Yeah, I know.
So that email, it is what it is, it's just letting the board aware of what's going on, because they might be coming back for amendment on this, I don't know.
Well, we thought the board should have a sense of what's going on.
Yeah. The issue is, DEP is the structures. You can put a pile, it's all this grandfathering on general permits for piles of soil piles if you've been, if you've been on the site lawfully since '07, they'll allow you to continue. However, the structures are really, it's very strict from DEP regs on structures. So that's what we're dealing with, and I'm trying to get all the information to the applicant, and I, it's, in hindsight, there was a holdup, because the condition of approval was an easement from the borough. The board recalls, there's a stone wall on the property. The stone wall is predominantly in the borough right of way, so you need a license agreement. So there was a holdup during this process to get that addressed. In hindsight, this should have been brought up at that time, but because of the UCC permit, I let the construction office, and that, in hindsight, that was a delay of about six weeks. It should have been brought up earlier, earlier, but I can't be the lead on a, is, on a UCC item. The lead is the construction office. I can't, I can't run, lack of a word, or a rough shot or something and say, no, no, this is, no, no, no. They're going to inspect it, they're going to get their own permits, I'm in the support role at that point.
Correct.
So in hindsight, it should have been kicked to the construction department sooner to address this in hindsight. But other than that, it's, it's going to work its way out. It's just, it's a delay.
Yeah, one other thing. About a year and a half ago, we approached the mayor and council, the planning board about getting help, getting a zoning officer. We have a new zoning officer. One of the things that we need to do is ensure, just as Frank did, Gary Huzuka, MacRae Fellow, Al Wigan, that the zoning officer comes to our meetings. Because everything we do is predicated on his or her rejection or denial of an application. So I'd like that person to be at our meetings. Write a letter, that's what we did the last time.
Yeah, it's.
Chairman's comments, it's my understanding, Jenica chime in, I don't think her scope of job duties includes going to the night meetings, is that correct?
Well, we need to change that, because I disagree.
Look, I, I've articulated that both boards, you know, when Frank Woso came here, I thought it was very beneficial, because he would fill the board in on why the applicant is here, what the violations are. And the policy of the borough's always been, if you're in violation, the penalties are stayed until the board reviews that. I think it's good to have that background. So I'm in total support of having a zoning officer.
Correct.
At these meetings to.
Many municipalities know it, it's not, we're.
We always did. Going back to the 70s, I know Matt Carfellow, then Al Wigan, Gary Huzuka, they all came, and Frank Woso. I'd like to draft a letter for approval for next meeting, we'll present it to the borough council again. Okay, anything else to come from the board? Someone want to move or adjourn that?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Move second, on the favor?
Aye.